Ladies and gentlemen, members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth-floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 p.m., Tuesday, December 11, 2012, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry, Mr. Edmonds, Mr. Heretic.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Randall. Mr. Whitehurst.
Here.
Mayor Wright.
Here.
Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move around here. If I may. We've got these following items to talk to you about tonight. First is our bond sale. Second is a presentation on the CAFER, the audit. And that will come in two doses. One here in work session, and then as a late item to your regular session agenda in our auditor, our independent auditor will be there for that meeting. And then the third item is a briefing on the situation with CCDI. And the last item, I want to bring you up to date on a working group that I've put together on the MLK project. That's not a briefing, but just to let you know where we stand. And we're looking at doing a briefing in January to council. But first, some good news. Today, we saved $1.24 million. Is that great?
That's always a good thing.
Let me tell you how we did it.
Tell us how we saved that, John.
Yes, sir. We got to spend a little money to save it. September 25, you were briefed by staff and by our financial advisors on the opportunity to issue 8.0 million in new bonds. And to advance refund, $16 million worth of bonds. That's like refinancing the mortgage on your house. And then you came back in October, October 26, and you authorized that to proceed with the adoption of a bond resolution. And what you said is that the interest rate on the new bonds couldn't be any more than 4%. And that the savings on the advanced refunding, the refinancing, had to be somewhere between $450,000 and $750,000. Okay, from that, we put the wheels in motion to go to New York because we had to get this issue rated by our bond rating agencies. And that took place the week of Thanksgiving. The mayor went, Carroll went, Patrick Small went, Godfrey went, Tim went.
Brian Foster.
And Brian.
Right.
So we had an awesome team up there. And we were able to keep our bond ratings, which is really good. And if you recall from the correspondence that I've sent you, Finch gave us a double A, Moody's gave us a double A, and S&amp;P, Standards and Poor, gave us a double A. The day was the first day that we could get to the market. The markets got whacked a little bit on schedule-wise because of the hurricane. And so today was our day. The market today was moving very fast. And there was a lot of Virginia paper, as they say in the vernacular, in the market. In fact, Hampton Roads Senate Action District Commission planned to issue $350 million worth of bonds, and that's a big issue. Remember, ours was eight for new bonds and 16. So ours was just a small issue compared to Hampton Roads. And of the Hampton Roads issue, $250 million of that was for advanced refunding. We get a call from our financial advisors around 2:00. And at that point in time, only $50 million of the Hampton Roads issue had been underwritten. The rest of it was still unsold. And at that point in time, the interest rate that we had, and it's negotiated, the underwriter as Wells Fargo, was 2.85% on the new bonds. And $1.1 million saving on the advanced refunding. Now, while we were talking, first we brought in our financial advisors, and then we bring on the underwriters, which in this case is Wells Fargo. While we're talking, Hampton Roads takes their bonds out of the market. And so that makes an opportunity for us. And we tell Wells, "Go sharpen your pencil." And so within about a half an hour, they call us back. And we end up with an interest rate of 2.81% for the new bonds, and a savings of 1.24% on the advanced refunding of the $16 million worth of bonds.
Very good.
So we got a good deal.
Got a real good deal.
These are interest rates that have not been this low in 40 to 50 years, so it's time to celebrate. We did the deal today. They needed an oral proceed with us. The underwriter is telling us that the rates are not going to get any better because we're coming down towards the end of the year when activity is not that great. And so we needed to say yes to this deal, which we did today. Yes, sir.
Oh, go ahead, John. I was going to ask you a question about the rating agencies. Did they cite some justification on maintaining our good ratings?
Well, they cited our stability, that we're putting in place a good team. And they expressed some pluses and some minuses. And I sent that to council last night. It was part of the package that I gave. Finally got the last report. They look at you inside out, and they look at how you dress, too. So any little hiccup could possibly have a negative impact on how they perceive you. Although, you know, they look at us, we're looked at not only as the city, but how stable and how progressive and how forward-leaning we are, whether or not we're a good team. And so they're looking for things that may create doubt, doubt to them, and then doubt to the potential bond buyers. We close on these bonds on October, I mean, December 27. And so we'll have the proceeds from the bond issue for the new bond shortly thereafter, and then we can get to work. Part of the proceeds of the new bonds, $4.75 million, goes to the courthouse, and the rest are for other projects. So that's the good news, ladies and gentlemen.
Very good.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm going to ask our CFO, Carol, to give a report, a briefing to you on our audit. And she'll have a PowerPoint with this, too.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to present the results of our year-end closeout and the audit that was recently completed. As you may be aware, the state code sets out certain provisions requiring localities in Virginia to have an audit every year, and to have that audit completed by, and a presentation made by the independent auditor to the local governing body by December 31 of each year. The report that was recently distributed to you is the city's comprehensive audit report. It's, in common vernacular terms, it's often referred to as the audit. The city prepares this document. It's done largely by the finance department staff. And even though the auditor expresses an opinion on it, the city is solely responsible for the accuracy and the contents of the financial statements. Governmental accounting is different than the accounting that you typically see in the private sector. It's a fund accounting system, and you are probably familiar with the self-balancing set of funds that the city has. The general fund is the city's major operating fund, and when we refer to city services that are provided, such as police and fire, it's that fund that the expenditures are paid from. But we have another, a number of other funds, including the utility fund and other special revenue capital projects fund, that are used for a variety of purposes. The rules for governmental accounting are set out by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, and this is analogous to the Financial Accounting Standards Board, or FASB, in the private sector. Because governmental accounting is somewhat different from the private sector, although there are certain similarities, some readers of the document may find the layout of the statements unfamiliar. But GASB has made a concerted effort over time to make changes in order to make the statements more readable and easier to understand. The city's, I'm going to talk for a little bit now about the overall audit process. And as the city manager mentioned, our audit partner, Mr. Robert Beloch, Chair Baker at Hollings, will be at your regular meeting to fulfill that state code provision requirement that he present a detailed report to council. Just to give you some background about the audit process itself, the auditors don't look at every single transaction that the city has on its books. What their role is, is to express an opinion on the city's financial statement, to say that they present fairly the city's financial results and financial condition as of the end of the fiscal year, and that there are no material misstatements in the financial statements. So how do they do that? They identify items within the city's records that have a possibility of causing the financial statements to be materially misstated. And then they design and conduct testing to get them a level of assurance that the financial statements are presented fairly. They also do internal control testing and look at our internal control environment, and again, within a level of materiality, are looking at the adequacy of the city's internal controls. The fiscal year 2011-12 year-end ended up with a clean or unqualified audit opinion. And so that's the best opinion that we can get on the financial statements. In addition to the audit opinion that's issued by the auditor, they also issue several compliance reports. One is a report on internal control over financial reporting, and the other has to do with their review of federally funded programs in conformance with the Office of Management and Budget, or OMB, Circular A133, which sets forth their audit requirements. These two compliance areas ended up with the following results. There were no material weaknesses noted in the internal control over financial reporting. There were some findings, however, related to the OMB compliance. The first of these is that for last fiscal year, the net assets were overstated, and we, as the management, booked a prior period adjustment in order to correct for that.
Carol, let's point out that that's not the fiscal year, the end of June 30, 2012. That's the prior year that ended June 30, 2011.
2011.
Right. So in the process of our year-end review, we noted that there was a portion of the debt that had not been reported in last year's financial statements. So that was corrected for this year, but because of that prior period adjustment, the auditor had to make a finding on the compliance report.
Okay.
In addition, there was a CDBG transaction report that earlier in the fiscal year had not been timely filed with HUD.
And it's important, maybe for the people who are not familiar with this term, that's the Community Development Block Grant Program that's administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which we call HUD.
And the city, just so you're aware, we recently hired a new grants administrator position, and the person will be starting on the 17th. And that person's responsibility will be to focus on all of our grant accounting, compliance, and application process, so that we make sure that we don't have that issue again in the future. And then secondly, in the Social Services Department, there is a Special Welfare Trust Fund, and the state, this is a state requirement, that if, when a child goes out of that agency's custody, the funds that were provided for the support of that child had to be returned to the funding source or shaded to the state. That did not happen in the five instances that the auditor tested. And we will be working with the Social Services Department to make sure that proper controls are in place, again, to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future. I'll now turn to the highlights of the audit. And obviously, there's a lot of material in here, so as, you know, as you are reading it, or as the public says, if you have questions, feel free to contact the finance department, and we'd be happy to respond to them. The total fund balance for the general fund for the end of the fiscal year is $64.3 million. Of that, some of it is reserved or already committed for certain activities, but the unassigned portion is $53.6 million, which is a $13.9 million increase from the prior fiscal year. Of that amount, approximately 3.9% came from operations. $10 million, you may recall, came from monies that was returned, that were returned to the city by the school system, represented unspent money from prior fiscal years. This unassigned fund balance represents 24% of council's original adopted budget. Since that time, you've made some additional appropriations, and that fund balance now represents 23% of the budget. And obviously, both of those percentages exceed the council policy target of 15%. I do want to just point out that one of the areas that the rating agencies specifically mentioned was our level of fund balance. And one agency in particular noted that if, you know, if that fund balance were to drop, not below the 15% target, but below where it is, that that could be a reason for a downgrade. And finally, cash and temporary investments on the general fund total $42.2 million.
Carol, before you say if it drops beneath the 15%,
No, they were looking, they want to see not only the 15%, but they want to see a cushion over and above that. They look at your cash reserves as a, you know, safety valve, if you will. We're in an uncertain economy. They noted, too, that the city has some exposure to what's happening at the federal level, particularly with all of the federal activity in the area. And they want to know that we have adequate cash reserves on hand. And, you know, I can tell you from my experience in other cities, that's not unusual. Once you establish a certain level of cash reserve cushion, they want to know that you are, you know, being prudent about maintaining that and not, you know, not spending it down without having some planned purpose for that.
Okay. So the key is a planned purpose?
Yes, but they did specifically mention, and when you look at the reports that we sent out yesterday, you'll see in the Moody's report in particular, that they did note that the cash reserves were an area that they wanted to see maintained. And they listed some positives, some things that could improve the city's rating, and some things that could cause the rating to go down. And they specifically said that if fund balance were to go down beyond its current level, that could be reason for a rating drop. Continuing on with the general fund, the fund balance, total fund balance increased by $12.7 million from the prior fiscal year. Looking at the revenues and expenditures compared to budget, the actual revenues were $220.9 million, which fell $3 million short of the budgeted estimates of $223.9. And that's primarily due to shortfalls in several taxes. You can see general property, bank franchise, business occupational license, and telecommunications. And as we prepare the revenue estimates for the upcoming budget, we will be adjusting for expected changes due to where we ended up this current fiscal year. On the expenditure side, expenditures were $205.9 million, and that was $14 million under the budget appropriations of $220 million. Every function that was appropriated by council came in under budget. And as I'm sure you're aware, the city management has been, particularly in the area positions, holding positions vacant with the intention of coming in under budget so that the city did not end up in a deficit situation. The Public Utility Fund, which is another major fund in the city, had total net assets of $162.3 million, which is an increase of $7.7 million, or 5% from the prior year amount of $154.6 million. And then for all city funds and operations, our net assets were $430.3 million, again, an increase from the prior fiscal year of $29.1 million. So these results are positive, and again, the rating agencies look at our preliminary financial results for the year, and that was a plus because it was our fourth year in a row that we've had surpluses at the end of the year, even though we've had fiscal challenges that we've had to address. And again, the audit partner will be here at your regular meeting, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good, Carol. And going back to the undesignated fund balance slide, I guess my question would be, would they rather us keep the money in the undesignated fund balance as opposed to pouring it over into helping take care of some of our pension liabilities?
That's right. That makes sense. Well, and that's, the pension is another area that they mentioned as a challenge for the city, and is one that, obviously, the city needs to address. The two city-funded pension plans have dropped to a funded level of 28%, 32%, which is very low, and is something that the city needs to address. And I think that the rating agencies would view it as a positive if we were targeting money to address that. And we'll be coming to council at an upcoming meeting with some options and recommendations for, you know, how you might want to direct your fund balance. Because another area that council had set up, you know, an economic uncertainty reserve account in the last time you did your financial policy update, but it has not been funded. And particularly given the uncertainty and the fragility of the economy right now, it might be prudent to have that money there to serve as a buckler, so that if we have to make adjustments to our budget, we're not doing it in a draconian way. We're doing things incrementally so that we have minimal impact on the services that are provided to our citizens and to our employees.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Carol.
I want to emphasize what Carol said. As you look through this document later on, call at any time, please. This is a very comprehensive report, and it's very useful. And you will get the auditor's presentation tonight, and he'll have room for questions. And at the end of this presentation, we'll have a resolution for you to adopt, which officially receives the report and files it, but leaves the door open for you to make any inquiries that you want about the matter. We beat the deadline. As I told our team today, we killed a bear. It got killed 11 o'clock on Sunday night. That's when this thing came to fruition. And now the next animal we got is really a beast. It's not only a bear, but a dragon that frees fire. That's the budget.
Stay out.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I also want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the hard work of the finance department staff and our audit teams, because they really put a phenomenal effort into this.
Thanks. That's why she said that, because I put them in a pressure cooker, and they responded. They really turned to it. Thank you, Carol. The next briefing, Fred's going to come up and give us a status report on the CCDI matter.
Thank you, Fred.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, and this is our City Council.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here tonight, as Mr. Rowe indicated, to provide an update to you on the current matters affecting the Center for Community Development, Inc., or CCDI. In fact, if necessary, maybe to provide a brief snapshot of the HOM program, so as we present the current issues to you tonight, you'll have a better understanding of the procedures the city and all of our partners must adhere to. HOM is a program that is funded through Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, to help provide affordable housing for those citizens that meet certain low-income requirements. This program has been part of our commitment to provide decent housing for all of our citizens for over 20 years. In total, it has provided over $16.8 million during that time. Most recently, HUD has experienced a series of budget cuts and program modifications nationwide. And our most recent allocation totaled a little over $414,000. The program is dependent on public-private partnerships between the city and nonprofit groups known as community housing development organizations, or CHODAs. As I've said, these private groups are nonprofit groups that have the ability and capacity to develop affordable housing for the community in which it serves. To be a CHODA, an organization must be certified by the locality that it has the capacity, ability, and financial means to support the mission. Currently, we have three organizations that either are or with a submission of additional materials to be a CHODA. It is important to note that once an organization is certified, they then work with the city to create projects. Once a project is accepted, received, reimbursement for reasonable expenses that are eligible under the program are then provided from the city to the CHODA. You can see the three CHODAs that are currently either available or almost complete, CCDI, Habitat for Humanity, and Southeastern Virginia Housing Corporation. There are three properties, or projects, as we call them, that have been identified as potentially ineligible projects. The projects are 1029 Anne Street, 1231 Elm Avenue, and 2309 Peach Street. The property on Anne Street is located in the Parkview section of the city. As you can see from this slide, it's about a block and a half from the new Parkview Elementary School. The particular property or the structure is a two-story structure home that has many of the characteristics of the Parkview community. The assessment of the property is $125,410, and that's total assessment, land and building, which is lower than the average for this block, which has an average assessment of CCDI started this project in 2008, when an initial budget of $60,000 was submitted and approved. CCDI increased the budget on two occasions by a total of $38,000, for a total of $98,000 in the budget. To date, CCDI has requested and received reimbursement of $93,853.50 for eligible expenses. The property on Elm Avenue is located in the Prentice Place section of the city. Again, as you can see, it's located on the northeast corner of Elm and Jefferson. Also, as you can see, it is about a block from the rear portion of the new Brighton Elementary School. This particular property, again, is a two-story structure home. The assessment of the property is $84,780, which, again, is lower than the average for this block, which is $130,000, $130, $530. Again, CCDI started this project in 2008 with an initial budget of $70,000. CCDI, again, increased the budget on two occasions by, again, a total of $38,000, for a total of $108,000. To date, CCDI has requested and received reimbursement of $10916.34 for eligible expenses. The final property is the property on Peach Street. It is also in the Prentice Place section of the city. Actually, this property is about a block east of the 2231 Elm Avenue that we just discussed. This particular property, again, This particular property, again, is a two-story structure. The assessment of the property is $89,120. Again, lower than the average for the block, which is $100,324.
Does that include the school bus?
No, sir. That's only adjoining property. Finally, again, CCDI started this project in 2008 with an initial budget of $60,000. That was submitted and approved. CCDI, again, increased the budget on four occasions by a total of $60,108 for a total budget of $120,108. To date, CCDI has requested and received reimbursement of $118,262.42 for eligible expenses. As we've all heard and read, a total of approximately $313,000 has been paid to CCDI for eligible expenses for these three properties. This is a summation of the total dollars reimbursed by the city, not the total budgeted submitted by CCDI. In addition to these reimbursed funds, CCDI has obtained monies from BBNT Bank. In a surprise to the city staff, we learned that BBNT was in the final stages for foreclosure for all three properties recently. In a spirit of cooperation, BBNT agreed to a 30-day extension to the sale at public auction to allow additional time for all concerned to study and see if there were alternatives to the auctions. Staff has worked to try and list the current issues that exist with this problem. First and most important, and probably not the easiest, but the best for everybody, would be a way of finding a way to satisfy the visa trust held by BBNT. The second is that, and one very important, is the city needs to avoid or reduce the current exposure of repaying HUD $313,000. Third issue is ultimately, we wish all the properties rehabilitated and sold to qualified low-income buyers. There are several alternatives at this time that we've listed for you. That is not to say others may not emerge. This is what we've identified to date. We feel these are the main ones. First, and really the most desirable, is that CCDI work with BBNT and complete the projects as had been planned. This will remove the city's exposure to paying funds already reimbursed to CCDI.
That's the best alternative.
That's the best.
And he's going to tell you the worst alternative next.
The second is that no solution can be reached between CCDI and BBNT. This will result in an auction. While the first alternative is the most desired, staff feels that there's a very high probability that this action will happen.
Fred, how much is owed to BBNT? Do you know?
We have been told unofficially, and I don't have anything from BBNT, that it's in excess of $400,000.
On these three houses?
On these three properties.
Yes, sir. That's interesting information to us. It's a little north of $400,000. We've heard $417,000. So if you do the math, you got $313,000, $100,000 of HUD money, and then $417,000 from the bank. There's three-quarters of a million dollars invested in these three properties. Divide by three, and you're looking at a quarter of a million apiece. I mean, this is back-of-the-envelope stuff.
And that's not including the money that we've given them? Another, what, quarter million dollars?
That's for other things. Yes, sir. Those are prior appropriations. But if you're talking about the money that...
Just for those properties?
Yes, sir.
My, my. Okay.
There is a third and a fourth alternative. The third alternative is one that we've placed before you, and that's if BBNT comes down in price a whole lot and another partner or CHODA that we have can come in and buy the properties, there may be ways. And we're trying to discover all of the ins and outs of those at this time, whether additional funds can be leveraged. But that, again, would be putting more money into these properties. But if that comes to fruition and it meets the home requirements, then our exposure for the $313,000 could be either reduced or eliminated. But, again, that's a third, and it's an alternative. We don't have a whole lot of information that we can share with you right now, but it's one we're looking into just about every minute of the day.
Fred, let me ask you. Where are all the houses at as far as progress completion?
He's going to cover that. That's a very good question, Mr. Mayor.
Let me just say, the last one is for the city to buy it and then rehab it. And that's one that we're not looking at.
And that's just a variation of this alternative here.
Honestly?
Okay.
Of the three properties that we have, let me start with Ann Street. We have no permits. We have seen where no work has been done on the property. So we feel like on that property, there still is a lot of work to be done to bring it up to be the affordable housing to meet the standards for a decent place to live.
There's a lot of deterioration. There's a lot of deterioration.
Yes, ma'am. In fact, this is the same as we did in, and the windows were open.
That's right.
So you're getting not only the deterioration you've got there, but the others back there.
So no permits on Ann Street have been taken out to do any work?
No permits for Ann Street.
Okay.
On Elm Avenue, when we were having meetings with HUD, there was a request for the permits for Ann Street. While we have seen that work has occurred, we have not found any permits on Elm Avenue as well. The third property is Peach Street. We have building permits for that, for work that's been done. It seems obvious from the outside. You can look, see new windows and siding, but I don't know what's going on on the inside because there has never been a final inspection requested for the work that's been done on the interior of that property. That's where these properties stand as far as being repaired.
So complete percent, Ann Street, zero, Elm, zero, and Peach, maybe 80? They've had permits, but not a final?
That's true.
And we knew that somebody on council was going to ask that question because we ask it of ourselves today. And we don't have a good answer. By postponing the auction, we bought time to work this matter. And all the parties need to be at the table, to include the bank.
Yeah.
The bank's got to be willing to... We want to find out how much the bank is willing to back off that number, if in fact it's $417,000. And we need to... Where are... What's the progress on these? What will it take to get them completed and to meet the mission, the goal, providing a house that can be sold?
Affordable housing for low-income that is decent and affordable. Any questions?
I guess trying to look at, I mean, your alternatives and options. If you've already got this much invested in these properties and likelihood is nothing's been done, I mean, how do you get someone else to go in? I mean, we're already upside down. Is there a worse term than upside down? I mean, that's where we are. So do you...
No, sir. It is a dilemma.
You don't have many alternatives.
And thank goodness that we were able to convince the bank not to auction off the property because that is, in fact, the worst alternative for us. If an unrelated party would come in and just buy those houses, and they fall out of the project, then HUD is going to require us to pay back.
To pay back the funding.
Yes, ma'am.
That's right.
And that's about a half a penny on the tax rate.
Question I have is how did we get to this position? What has been CCDI's response? And the other question is, who was responsible for the oversight?
Those are good questions. And that's what we need to drill down and get the answers. I don't have that answer tonight. And so we are... And I'm glad we have 30 days because we need that deadline and the pressure to get this done.
Because if... And I noticed in the presentation, you mentioned the initial assessment that you set up. One of them was $60,000, and then they came in and increased it by 60. How did they get a draw without actually doing something?
That's right.
I mean, is there... I'm sure there's some administrative fees and things like that, but that's got to be a certain cap. And then after that, you don't disperse any funds until you send an inspector or somebody out to see it. Is that how it works, or...
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
The answer is yes. I mean, HUD holds us responsible. We are the oversight agency. And you saw in Carol's presentation that we get audited for that. And we do have a finding, which means that we've got to work better in our oversight on that particular project that was identified in the audit.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, if we've dispersed $313,000 of federal funds, and we're at 0% and maybe 80 on the third one?
That's right.
I mean, that's a fall down all over.
All the way.
City, the organization, the entity. I mean, there's something wrong there. Yes, sir, Doc Bittman.
Mr. Manager, Mayor, I'm sure there are some CCDI representatives here. Would it be appropriate for them to say something in regards to number one, pays back and completes projects?
I would recommend that we have that meeting where we can, if we can get all the parties at the table, to include the bank. I think it's really important that we have the bank. And this is really...
Right, not the place for that.
I think if we can convince the bank... I mean, they were willing to take the risk of auctioning the property and getting something less than the $417,000. If we can get everybody at the table and work to a goal of completing the project, so if there's a haircut to be done, everybody gets trimmed equally?
Yeah, yeah.
Vice Mayor.
And there will be.
And then I looked at the praise value or the assess value of the property where it is now?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were up there.
$150. Can't get there from here.
I missed that.
Now, most of those assessments were under the average in the neighborhood. Is that just because they need improvements, or...
Janey.
Janey, have you already gone out at some time and looked and seen that there's work needing to be done? So if everything else in the neighborhood is assessed around $150, and you have... Each one of them was lower by about $10,000 or $15,000, would that have any burn on your assessment? Or that particular house just happened to be lower than the average?
It happened to be lower than the average.
Okay. So you didn't do any kind of eyeballing?
No, we have gone out. When the initial application was made, we did go out and make a visual. We were not allowed inside. We could not gain access. So the assessment that we have is based strictly on exterior observation.
Exterior, okay.
Yes, sir.
These are all very good questions. And we don't quite honestly have the answers to.
How soon can we get that meeting of the minds of all of the players, John?
We're endeavoring to do that this week.
This week, okay, very good. All right, Mr. Moody?
Is the follow-up on the mayor's thing, is the CCDI board, are they aware of this information?
I can't answer that. I don't know what the board knows.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Randall?
You made my comment for me. My concern are all parties on the same page, looking at the same information. And then how soon will we get some turnaround in terms of how we can bring this to conclusion? Because this affected the whole communities where those houses are located. And it's bringing down blight and also impact on what those houses are going to be appraised at. So the sooner we can pull this together, the better we can keep the upgrades of the communities of those homes that are made.
And all of their adjacent homes and properties were occupied to where these were, or did we notice that, Fred?
Yes, sir.
All of the homes are occupied, adjacent properties?
There were some others on the street that were not, but appeared on both sides to be occupied.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Next. The last item we have is just an update on a meeting that I convened. Put together a project team on the tunnel project. And some of the players in the room, Janey, James Wright, engineering, Judy Duffy, our surveyor. It's a multi-discipline. And what we're working to do is to give council a briefing in January that starts at a very high altitude level, starts the parameters of the project, how it's financed, and then drill down to the particulars about, for example, what properties need to be acquired to make this project come to fruition. We know that there's possibly five parcels that we own. That we own. And we have not real good information on the private property. So we'll be coming back to you. We may even recommend that you consider a non-council meeting date to hear this briefing. Okay? Thank you, sir.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you very much. Is that it?
Are there any city council liaison reports this evening?
Okay.
Mr. Moody?
Mayor, very quickly, a couple of weeks ago, as the liaison to the Sports Hall of Fame met with Ms. Web Tench. They gave a real good report. Bank is pleased, obviously. We should be pleased they're operating in the black. They're continuing to build on their catering business, their function business. Primarily, they're seeing an increase in the number of weddings that are taking place at the facility, which is profitable business. And they're working towards getting a niche into some other type of functions to get even further in the black, which certainly lessens the burden on taxpayers.
Okay, very good. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we got a motion for close?
Yes, sir. Councilmembers, you have a motion for a closed meeting in front of you?
We're going to a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1, to discuss the performance of an individual employee or employees and possible employee appointments. The subject matter of the meeting is to discuss personnel matters. The purpose of the meeting is to permit confidential discussion of the subject.
Mr. Cherry, that's... Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Heretic?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehurst?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are in closed meeting. Thank you.